So, good morning, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and get started. So, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Baines, Councilmember Bretafeld, Councilmember Capriolio, Councilmember Chavez, Councilmember Olivier, Vice President Brando, and President Soria.
Here. Thank you. Next, we will have our invocation. So if you can please come up to the front, and we'll ask everyone to stand up and stay standing for the flag salute. Thank you.
Hear that? There we go. Let's pray together. Father, thank you so much for this opportunity to meet. Your word says that the heavens declare the glory of God. The firmament shows your handiwork. Day after day, they utter speech; night after night, they reveal knowledge. When we look at the sky in Fresno, we see your power, your majesty, and your wisdom. And so, we pray that not only outside in Fresno, but even inside, your wisdom will be seen today, even in the decisions that are made by this council. Give insight into the best things that can be done for our city today. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Ready salute.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have two changes. The first is for Item 1H, number 2. It lists two city of Fresno parks, Quigley and Victoria West, and the staff report should read "Quigley and Jaswan Singh Kiara Park." The second change is for Item 3D. Action pertaining to the 2018 budget update for the general fund has been moved to March 1st Agenda per staff. Those are the only two changes I have.
Perfect. Do any councilmembers have any changes to the agenda? Great. So, is there a motion to approve the agenda? There's a motion by Councilmember Capriolio, and there's a second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion passes 6-0 with Councilmember Baines absent. Next is the consent calendar. Would any councilmembers like to pull any item for discussion?
Yeah, Council President, I'd like to pull Item 1H, please.
Councilmember Bretafeld?
Yes, I'd like to pull Item 1A, 1B, and 1I.
That was 1B?
Yeah, 1A, 1B, and 1I.
And the only other item that I will be pulling is Item 1F. So now, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on the consent item? Or on the remainder of the consent items? Seeing none, and the screen is clear. Is there a motion to pass the balance of the consent?
So moved.
So, motion by Councilmember Capriolio, and there's a second by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Motion passes with 6-0 with Councilmember Baines absent. So now, we'll go on to ceremonials, and then after ceremonials, we'll come to the contested calendar items that were pulled. And so, first, we have our Councilmember Gary Bretafeld doing a special presentation with the SPCA Pet of the Month.
Yes, we have this beautiful dog here, Finn, and we get the opportunity to let our community know about SPCA and the ability to adopt animals. And I was sharing with you that I adopted my dog about eight months ago. It showed you how happy we are, and we love our dog. So, I'm gonna hand this to you. I'll hold Finn, and you can talk about this.
Sure. So today, I brought with us Finn. He's a one to two-year-old terrier blend, and he's a very sweet little guy. We get a lot of little dogs into the SPCA like him. And I brought him with us because we get a lot of puppies as well, and puppies tend to get adopted pretty quickly, but... So, a lot of little guys like Finn get overlooked. So if you know anyone who is looking to adopt maybe an older dog, who's gonna be a little easier to potty train, we get a lot of very good little dogs like Finn. Finn is actually already potty trained, so I wanted to come and showcase him. And we do receive a lot of animals into the SPCA. On average, I believe, we receive about 67 animals a day. So, we definitely encourage everyone to adopt if you're looking to add another member to your family and spay and neuter your pets, so that there are less animals that are looking for homes in Fresno.
What's the process to adopt?
To adopt, it's a pretty simple process. We go over a contract with you. Adoption fee for dogs under six years old is $1.80, and that includes the spay or neuter, their microchip, their first vaccinations, a trip to the vet, year of licensing. So, they're pretty much ready to go. And then, we discount it for dogs that are over six years old, because it is a little harder to get senior dogs adopted as well. And that'll just be $1.50 to adopt a dog over six years old. And so, if you're looking to adopt, or if you know anyone that is, you just come on down to the shelter and take a look around. We have lots of dogs you can interact with, and then when you're ready to adopt one, you just fill out the paperwork with us to adopt.
So, thank you for all the work that you do. I was just wondering, I know Councilmember Brando has a cat. Councilmember Brando? Councilmember Brando?
What's the question?
You have a cat. Speckles.
This dog's not big enough to survive my cat.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the work that you do.
Great. Next, we have a proclamation to the Mediterranean Grill and Cafe being presented by Councilmember Olivier and Councilmember Baines's office as well.
Right. Kiam and Ziad, come on forward. Come on up. I'll meet you down there. And Mitch, too? Okay, come on and stand right here. And this proclamation is also being presented by District 3 Councilmember Oliver Baines, because their restaurant is actually located in District 3. But since Councilmember Baines is not here, then I'll be more than happy to do the proclamation. Kiam and Ziad are the owners of the Mediterranean Grill. And Mitch, and her brother Mitch, are the owners of the Med Grill. That's what we... Everybody downtown here calls it Med Grill for short. Mediterranean Grill can be found over by... What's your address?
At 1031 U Street, between Teleri and De Visitero.
So that's across from the office depot, right there. Well, if you go there around lunchtime, and you see hundreds of cars, they're not there for the stores in that shopping center. That's all overflow parking from their place. They... The proclamation is because the restaurant and the family have just celebrated their 25th anniversary in business, and I think that deserves a round of applause, because we're talking about downtown business. And obviously, from this council dais, we really push and encourage our downtown business owners. Councilmembers, this place kind of serves as our cafeteria. So, and you all know it, and a lot of people... But better than cafeteria food. I probably should've said that. But, you know what? Not only do they serve absolutely fantastic lunch, and they're only open for lunch, but not only do they serve absolutely delicious food, but they are such a gem in our community, and they do so much to mentor their employees. They do so much to teach and bring them along. Your employees are very, very busy, because you're so busy. In fact, my own chief of staff was once one of your servers, and that's where we got her from. She came over and did an internship, and over the course of the past five years, has worked her way up to run my office operations. So, Yahira, you... I know that a lot of the things that you're very good with people, you learn that while working for this family at the Med Grill. So, I... On behalf of the city of Fresno and the city council, the entire community, congratulations on 25 years in business and wishing for 25 more. We're all very proud of you. We all enjoy your food very much, and so, thank you for everything that you do. What we'll do now is we'll have our city clerk read the proclamation, and then I'll present the proclamation. We'll take pictures, and you can say a few words.
Whereas the Mediterranean Grill and Cafe has just celebrated its 25th anniversary, having opened in December 1992 by the Romanian family. And whereas the Mediterranean Grill and Cafe has remained a gem in downtown Fresno, regardless of any obstacles in its way. And whereas the Mediterranean Grill and Cafe, under the ownership of him, Romanian mama and dad, has not only provided excellent cuisine, but implemented opportunities for approximately seven Fresnoans. And whereas the Mediterranean Grill and Cafe serves hundreds of people daily with its fresh and delicious food, and brings each customer into the family that has been created at 1031 U Street. And whereas the Mediterranean Grill and Cafe has won numerous awards, including People's Choice 10 times, 10 years in a row, Fresno's Best twice, Best of the Valley twice, and the Best Locally Owned Business. And whereas the Mediterranean Grill and Cafe has made countless contributions to the city of Fresno, extending far beyond excellent cuisine. And now, therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran, and the Fresno City Council do hereby proclaim the 15th day of February to be Mediterranean Grill and Cafe Day in the city of Fresno.
Who would like to say a few words?
Just briefly, I'm Mitch. You know, my sister, she started... You know, I kind of built the restaurant, but I was smart enough as an engineer to get out of town. She took it over and really made it work. It was tough, the first eight, nine years, and anybody else would've given up. But she stuck in there with mom and dad, and now, it's a flourishing business, and we appreciate all the customers and our extended family, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. And so, now that today is Med Grill Day, you don't have to go to work today.
Everyone today will pay double.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
And now, we have a special proclamation being presented by Councilmember Bretafeld to Samantha Kocorian.
Welcome to City Hall. This is Council President Soria. Happy to be joined by Council President Soria, and welcome Samantha Kocorian to City Hall. One of the nice things that we get to do down here is honor some of the fantastic citizens that reside here, especially when they do heroic, brave things. Samantha did that, I think it was January... 25th, at 7:42. Samantha saw that a car had actually gone into a pond out by Copper River, and she jumped in there to help the person. I believe you notified...
I called 911.
911. They came out. She stayed with the person. The person's doing very well, but she obviously exhibited tremendous bravery to do something like that, and we just wanted to honor you today, and thank you for exhibiting the courage that you did. Council President Soria, anything you'd like to say?
Well, I just wanna echo the same words and the sentiment. It is great to be able to recognize just, you know, regular citizens that are taking a little extra to make sure that our neighbors are safe. And so, I want to thank you for your courage and for making an impact in this person's life.
And would you like to take the mic?
You know, I just hope that this reminds people to remember that we're all in this life together, and you know, if you see something, don't assume that it's already been handled, because I was in complete disbelief that absolutely nobody had stopped with all the cars that were continuing to pass. It was very obvious what had happened, so just don't assume that something's already been handled, and just... We're all neighbors, and just do good any chance you get. It makes everybody feel better. Thank you.
And City Clerk?
City Clerk, if you'd like to read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas on Thursday, January 25th, at 7:42 PM, Samantha Kocorian helped rescue a man whose car went into a golf course pond at Copper River, located near Maple and Copper. And whereas Samantha was on her way home from church when she saw the vehicle taillights in the water, and jumped into the golf course pond to help save the driver. And whereas Ms. Kocorian continued over 10 minutes to try and break the glass of the window, and stayed in the water until firefighters arrived and were able to pull him out. And whereas her first thought when she saw the vehicle was that her neighbor with small children owned a similarly-looking car, and she was afraid it was them. And whereas the man that went into the pond was transported to the hospital for treatment, and was expected to be fine. Therefore, be it resolved that on this day, the mayor and council members of the city of Fresno wish to show their pride and gratitude to Ms. Samantha Kocorian for her bravery and for being a heroic citizen by declaring today, February 15th, 2018, to be Samantha Kocorian Day in the city of Fresno.
Next, we have a special proclamation by Councilmember Chavez honoring United Way of Fresno and Madera Counties.
All right. This one's a little extra special. So, United Way is in the heart of District 5 Southeast, and I've got a little bit of history with United Way. I was actually one of your helpers about 10 years ago, when you would do the campaigns, going out to organizations and helping to fundraise. I think you still do that, right? And so, we'll get a chance to talk a little bit about that. But I wanted to bring them to City Hall, and first of all, thank you for the work you do in our community. You've always had a history of helping nonprofits, organizations, and underserved communities, and that's a big part of what we do here at City Hall. And so, we wanted to come today and talk a little bit about the VITA program, right, that you do as well. But I wanted to present you with a proclamation day for the work that you guys do today in our community. So Clerk, if we could read the proclamation?
Whereas free tax preparation services are now available through April 16th, 2018, to residents of the city of Fresno who earned $66,000 or less in the 2017 tax year, provided by the United Way of Fresno and Madera Counties Free Tax Preparation Service, VITA. And whereas these working families and individuals may be eligible for thousands of dollars in tax returns, including the California Earned Income Tax Credit, CAL, EITC, the Federal Earned Income Credit Tax, EITC, and the Federal Child Tax Credit, CTC. And whereas, city community development invested $2.6 million to support and expand the awareness, access, and capacity of the Free Tax Preparation Service, VITA, sites during the 2018 tax season in major cities and regions across the country, including Fresno. And whereas, earned income tax credits are often the largest cash infusion workers will receive all year, providing an essential financial cushion for those household living paycheck to paycheck. The investment CETA is making today will ensure that eligible families will have access to free, high-quality tax preparation services making today... Making today will ensure that the eligible families will have access to free, high-quality tax preparation service and a full roster of tax credits they have earned. And whereas, the United Way Free Tax Preparation Services in the 2016 tax year returned more than $10 million to local taxpayers to be used for families and individuals to make ends meet. And whereas, the United Way Free Tax Preparation Services are being provided at eight sites throughout Fresno and Madera Counties, including mobile sites in rural communities, and specifically six sites in the city of Fresno, at the United Way Fresno-Madera Counties offices Tuesday through Saturday, at Fresno State University Friday to Sunday, at West Side Church of God on Wednesdays, at St. Rest Baptist Church on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and at Roosevelt High School on Saturdays, and at Central California Legal Services Monday through Friday. And whereas taxpayers are able to call 211 or 866-559-4211 to find out if they qualify and to schedule an appointment. And whereas residents have an alternative option to file for free on their own by visiting Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Bran and the Fresno City Council do hereby proclaim February 15th, 2018, to be United Way of Fresno and Madera County Day in the city of Fresno.
Yvonne, could you repeat that again? There we go. That has gotta be one of... Probably one of the longest proclamations we've ever done, but I wanted to squeeze everything that kind of captures everything that you do. But with that, I'll let Lindsay say a few words, and if some of your folks want to speak, that'd be great, too.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Lindsay Callahan, President and CEO of United Way Fresno-Madera Counties. I'm joined with a few of my board members. Thank you for having us here today. This is my favorite season of the entire year. It's tax season. We have the privilege of moving forward our mission to help working families during tax season, because we promote earned income tax credits. That means more money back in working families' pockets. On top of that, we also provide free tax services to families who make less than $66,000 a year. Last year, as you heard in the proclamation, we returned $10 million to families in Madera and Fresno communities. We believe that both of these services are still completely underutilized. California left $2 billion on the table in earned income tax credits last year. That's more money for our communities, and we're really excited to push harder and harder to make sure that more and more people are using our tax services and are maximizing their credits through both the federal and the state earned income tax credit. Do my board members want to say anything?
I just want to say on behalf of the board that we are really excited about the work that we're doing. Lindsay's been with us for two years now and has a real vision for United Way of both Fresno and Madera Counties, and we couldn't be more excited. So, if you have the opportunity, reach out to us, and we'll tell you more about our story. Thank you.
And if you have questions, or you want to make an appointment for our tax services, call 211, and we will help you out. Anytime, free, 24/7. Thank you all. And our website is uwfm.org.
I encourage everybody to give. They do a lot of great work in our community, and thank you guys for coming down to City Hall. Shit it.
Lindsay, I just wanted to add, you and I've worked on several projects in the community, and you're always so active, and your energy is phenomenal. And I remember about four years ago, when I got involved with this program, I think it brought back $6, $6.5 million that back into our community by having those tax returns properly prepared and giving the people an opportunity to have that money returned to them in our community. So it has served so many well-thought-out things in our community, and you're part of a lot of that. Can't thank you enough. And Discovery Center, you were a star there, if you remember that.
I remember.
So, thank you for you and your team, and all the good stuff you do for our community and the city of Fresno. Thank you.
I think Councilmember Capriol is gonna donate now.
He will.
I have to get my tax return done first.
Thank you. Next, we will be doing a proclamation, and I will be presenting that for Rare Disease Day here in the city of Fresno. So Vanessa, if you want to join me up front. So this morning, we are here to shine some light on the importance of rare disease awareness. Many of you may be asking, what is rare disease? A rare disease is defined as any disease, disorder, illness, or condition that affects fewer than 200,000 people in the United States. So we know that this impacts a number of people throughout our entire country, and even here, people locally. And so, what we want to do here today is work in partnership with Vanessa and make sure that our community is aware of what a rare disease is and what we can do to help support the individuals that are impacted by this. Unfortunately, many rare disease results in premature death of infants and young children, or are fatal in early adulthood. So it is important for us to understand what it is, and you know, what can we do to address these issues early on. Again, Rare Disease Day is now celebrated over 80 countries around the world, and it really helps bring awareness to the rare disease community and the challenges that it faces. So I want to thank Vanessa for the work that you're doing on this issue, and we do have a proclamation to present, but I did want to give you an opportunity to maybe talk a little bit more about what you guys are doing.
I am with an organization called the National Organization for Rare Disorders. We are one of the oldest and most respected patient advocacy organizations out there. We are in existence to make sure that everyone who has a rare disease is represented in the medical community and in the pharmaceutical industry. One in 10 Americans has a rare disease. That means that in the city of Fresno alone, there are over 50,000 people affected by a rare disease. Half of the people battling cancer have a rare cancer, and every single pediatric cancer is considered a rare disease. The National Organization for Rare Disorders has started what's called the Rare Action Network. We are the advocacy arm. We are the boots on the ground, if you will. And on February 28th, across the globe, in state houses in the United States, we are hosting awareness events to make sure that all stakeholders involved in the rare disease community are involved in the process, including our legislators. If anyone is interested in coming up to Sacramento on the 28th of this month, I'll be up there. So, our main goal, again, is to raise awareness of how many people are actually affected by rare diseases and how we can continue to help that community. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, could you read the proclamation for the record?
Whereas there are nearly 7,000 diseases and conditions considered rare, each affecting fewer than 200,000 Americans in the United States, according to the National Institute of Health, NIH. And while each of these diseases may affect a small number of people, rare diseases as a group affects more than 30 million Americans. And whereas many rare diseases are serious with debilitating conditions that can have a significant impact on the lives of those affected, and while more than 450 drug and biologics have been approved for the treatment of rare diseases, according to the Food and Drug Administration, millions of Americans still have rare diseases for which there is no approved treatment. And whereas individuals and families affected by rare diseases often experience problems such as diagnosis delay, a lack of access to treatment or ancillary services, and difficulty finding a medical expert. And though the public is familiar with rare diseases, many patients and families affected by less widely known rare diseases bear a long share of the burden of finding research and raising public awareness to support the search for treatments. And whereas residents of the city of Fresno are among those affected by rare diseases, since nearly one in 10 Americans have a rare disease, and so, the city of Fresno is proud to be a part of the National Observance of Rare Disease Day on February 28th, 2018, organized by the National Organization of Rare Disorders. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Fresno mayor and city council does hereby proclaim February 28th, 2018, to be Rare Disease Day in the city of Fresno.
So now, we will move on to approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilmember Capriol, and a second made by Councilmember Chavez. Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion passes 5-0 with Councilmember Olivier and Councilmember Baines absent. Now, we'll move on to councilmember reports and comments. Councilmember Capriol.
Thank you, Council President. It's been a very busy week in District 4, so bear with me for a moment, but I want to thank, again, I see Parvin back there, the Parks Department for all of our hard work, along with Fresno Unified, the mayor, his administration, because this past weekend, we added more green space to the city of Fresno. Vinland Elementary is contiguous with Vinland Park, and we're able to install about a 20-foot, 25-foot gate, Parvin, it seemed like that. And...
And that enabled us to open up those school grounds after hours to all the residents of District Four, which enables us to play basketball, a totlot, swings, green space, more activities, flag football. So it was just a great, a great Saturday, and we kicked off the weekend, excuse me, Weekend Recreation and Fitness Program, and it's posted on the website. So every weekend, there's lots of activities going on in all the parks in the city of Fresno. With that, I also want to thank FPOA. They provided a lunch for us, and I think we had three hundred-plus hot dogs we gave out that lunchtime. And I was handing out the hot dogs, and a little boy came up, and he said, he said, "This is the best day ever." And he was, he was face painted up, and he had a great time, and everyone, all the kids were just smiling ear to ear. It was a great, great afternoon. So I want to thank you all again. It was fantastic. Congratulations again to Jim Pardini, a local Fresno native for many, many years. They're in their third generation of restaurateurs here in Fresno with his two sons. So he was the recipient of the twenty thousand eighteen Leon S. Peters Award at the Valley Business Lunchees put on by the Fresno Chamber. They always do a great job, and it was a great event and recognition that he has deserved for many, many years. Scott Miller also, and Natalie Clark, who received a community champion award for Gazebo Gardens, and Producers Dairy got the Harold Zinkin Entrepreneur of the Year Award. And there was a fellow named Daniel Bakem, a young man who's graduated from Fresno State, has an entrepreneur, and he started Sparkle Ties. And so he has ties that are very unique, and they're selling like hotcakes, as they say. And he was honored as well as the Student Entrepreneur of the Year. Yesterday, we spent the day, my team and I, at the Veterans Hospital. We handed out Valentines. A lot of elementary school kids prepare Valentines for the veterans. And through the Veterans Hospital, we were able to distribute probably a hundred and sixty Valentines to different heroes, heroes of the military that are confined to the hospital. And they seemed to thoroughly enjoy it, and it was great hearing their stories. One fellow's ninety-four years old, World War II veteran, and he was visiting the younger generation, Korean veterans, Vietnam veterans, and he was stout, as you could imagine. And it was a great, a great dialogue with him. He's quite a hero. Yesterday, we started and completed, and you'll show a couple of pictures of the up there. This was the before, and you'll see the after. So we had what we call a project of love on Valentine's Day. And that was with the students, the teachers, and the families that attend Atticott School. Principal Plech sent us an email in October and asked if we would help them do something to memorialize the students at that school. And these students are extremely fragile. They suffer from multiple disabilities. Their cognitive ranges are three months to nine months old. She explained that eighty-two students have lost their life at that school since nineteen seventy-two. So we wanted to, and every year, by the way, at least one student passes away. It's really, really sad, but we wanted to do something that would be helpful to the families that bring their children there. So we prepared this memorial, and this will give the families a chance to come and sit and reflect on the, one of the few places that their children really, really had happy times. So it was quite an event, and we're going to do the ribbon cutting in the near future. We partnered with Home Depot. Meathead movers are my favorite people. They helped us with Turkey Day and moved all the stone in for us. Sunnyside Trophy donated the plaque for us. Slush Puppy donated slushies to the students and everybody involved. They have two new flavors. My favorite was sour apple. The cotton candy was a little too sweet for me, but I'll give it another try. And again, Parks Department, you had a team out there, and yeah, these guys are strong. They were almost as strong as Laura Rios, my chief of staff. She was throwing bricks around like crazy. So it was a great team effort, and we really appreciated that, and they also appreciated that. So also John DeLucia right here in our printing department. Every time we come up with something for him, he comes through like a champ every single time. And we do make occasional changes, but he always brings it back to us in a perfect condition. And last but not least, on my, on my own behalf as well as my colleagues here, I think we all would like to have a moment of silence for the senseless acts that occurred in Florida yesterday, and maybe we could adjourn our meeting in memory of all the students and pray that those that were wounded will survive and that the families will be able to come back from this awful, awful tragedy. So thank you very much. Can we bow our heads in a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Caprillo. I think the screen is clear, so I just have a couple announcements. We had the Tower District Mardi Gras Parade happen in the Tower District on Sunday. I do want to thank our Fresno Police Department for being out there, having... The event went very well. It was very organized, and so I know that a lot of it has to do with the work that the nonprofit is doing in cooperation with our PD. So I want to thank them for the great work and the success of the event. There was a lot, a lot of people out there. And again, these types of events help our small businesses because we see people from all over, not only the city, but even outside visitors come to our annual Mardi Gras event. I also just want to briefly congratulate the business, businesses that got recognized earlier today, just as Councilmember Caprillo said. Two of them are in my district, so want to just again congratulate Jim Pardini for the twenty eighteen Leon Peters Award and Gazebo Gardens for being the Community Champion of the Year Award. And so it is exciting to have seen District One businesses being recognized for just the remarkable work that they've done over the years here in our community. And then lastly, just a reminder to folks, I believe I shared this last time, District One is doing the Women of the Year Awards. Our applications are out. They are due back in March first, so we encourage folks to recognize, to submit applications to recognize the women that are involved in District One. And so I want to thank all of you for taking time to do that. And then lastly, I did, I know that today we recognize Samantha Krikorian for her heroic acts. I want to give a shout out to the Fresno Bee McKinsey for actually highlighting someone from the city of Fresno that did a heroic act, and that was one of our fax drivers, Socorro Pelayo, and I believe that she will get the appropriate recognition shortly. But I did want to highlight that, and it was a phenomenal article written and covered by the Fresno Bee, really highlighting the type of people that work for the city of Fresno and what people are willing to do also to make sure that our community is safe. So I want to thank her and congratulate her for the great work that she's doing for the city of Fresno. It is a great reflection, again, of the staff that we have working for our city. Thank you. We'll move on now to Councilmember Brettafield.
I also want to second what you said about our bus driver. That was a fantastic thing that she did, and I know she'll be recognized. I also just want to say something positive about Del Estbrook and Jessica Hernandez. They're always helpful to us in our district and very responsive to our constituent needs, and just want to recognize the good work that they always do for us. Thank you.
Great. Next, we will go to contested consent calendar. We'll start off with item one A. So do we have staff here? This is the actions pertaining to the Crisis Intervention Team Services. This was pulled by Councilmember Brettafield.
My staff?
Hey, Chief.
Hi, Chief.
Just a couple of questions.
Good morning.
I was reading the staff report. So this is having, you will have one sergeant and four police officers, and maybe you can talk a little bit about the program I was reading, where they're not going to be in uniform, but they're assigned to this unit. Maybe you can just share a bit about...
Sure. So we've been looking at the number of calls for service our officers respond to that have some type of a mental health nexus. Upwards of forty percent, depending on the policing district, have a mental health nexus. So it made sense to us to create a special unit, a crisis intervention team, partnering with the Department of Behavioral Health, their clinicians, as well as case managers. Our officers, a sergeant and four officers, actually began this, this program back September of two thousand seventeen in anticipation of additional funding for the equipment and training from the Department of Behavioral Health. So we've actually been working with them. We're co-located in their facility now. The officers and the sergeant will respond to nine-one-one calls specific to those individuals that are facing a mental health crisis. They're able to free up our patrol officers so they can go back in service, and then they spend the needed time at that particular call, making sure that we use whatever de-escalation tactics that are available. We, the clinician is also, has a co-response with us, so they're at the scene. And the purpose is to de-escalate those situations and get those individuals the needed assistance, which may be having been committed for fifty-one fifty. The second piece of it is, on a proactive nature, is to look at those individuals as their most frequent consumers of law enforcement use and target those individuals in a good way in terms of making sure they're getting whatever medical service they need, making sure that they're taking their medications, so that they are not the ones creating a burden for us. This council item will allow a couple of things. Number one is for me to enter into agreement with them. Although we're operational and have been for five months, this will solidify that agreement and allow us to accept funding. They're going to fund us in the amount of a million three hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars over a five-year period for our existing program. And should that, should we add officers to it, there will be increased funding. The funding allows for them to purchase five of our patrol vehicles. All of them are unmarked. They're white SUVs. They have all the emergency equipment in them, and as well as a unique pieces of equipment that's called an acoustic warning signal projector that can be narrowly focused on that individual for the purpose of de-escalation, a non-impact de-escalation, to gain their compliance. And it also provides for computers and then some additional training. So a really good partnership with Department of Mental Health, been working very, very closely with Dewan UTEC. Captain Reed negotiated all of the details of this, but we are excited about the successes we're already having with it in freeing up units out in the field and the fact that, you know, we really haven't had a single incident that wasn't able to be controlled simply by their presence. So that's, that's what we're looking for. And again, the AAR is to allow for two hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred to be appropriated in the FY eighteen budget.
Okay. It sounds like a phenomenal program, and it sounds like a very proactive program, and I'm happy to support it. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
There's a motion by Councilmember Brettafield and a second by Councilmember Chavez. So before we take the comments from the council, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, Councilmember Chavez.
Hey, Chief, just had a, just had a quick question. The folks that, that we're going to be focusing on with this program, have you found that the, when our officers make contact, is it, is it the same group of folks that have mental health issues that we get calls for?
Oftentimes, we have what we call frequent consumers, those individuals that are repeat customers, people that we're responding to on a, sometimes a weekly basis. When we can get them the services that they need, the making sure that they're taking the medication, put them on the radar for Department of Behavioral Health and working with them, we can virtually eliminate or at least minimize the chance of us having a return to that location. And so, yes, we are seeing a frequent response to those individuals.
Okay. And, and I know that the county's kind of revamping their, their approach, too, with, with their models over there, and I know that they're super swamped as well. And the reason I ask that is because I know that, you know, as, as we go about talking about city issues, part of that is, are these folks that already have housing, or is it a mix of housing, homeless folks? Because I assume that's, that's the other challenge we have, right?
Yeah. The vast majority of these individuals are already in a home. They're, they're living with family, or they live on their own. Occasionally, we're going to see those individuals that are out on the street. Our officers are, we, we want to make sure this isn't in any way, shape, or form specific to homeless or street people. This is dealing with calls for service that are generated, and the vast majority of them are going to be in a home or maybe an incident that occurs in a public place, but they, they have a residence.
And I think that the partnership we're, we have is going to be great. So I'm trying to figure out what would be the link after our officers have contact and then the county is aware of them? What would be the link for those that are homeless to have them connect with services and housing?
Well, the, certainly those individuals that are out on the street with a mental health crisis, that is a challenge for us because the, the options for us really are to have them committed for a seventy-two-hour hold under Welfare Institution Code W-5150, unable to care for themselves or others, or a danger to themselves or others. But beyond that, it's really a challenge because if they don't have housing and that ongoing care, then likelihood is we're going to be, they're going to be a repeat customer.
Absolutely. No, I think this is a great, a great first start, Chief. I want to thank you for the work that you're doing with the county, with the school district that had a sense to work, and then also all our partners. I think you're really revamping the way that we approach our police department in a, in a great way.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Lisa.
Great. So we had a, a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to this item? Seeing none, the motion passes six zero with Councilmember Baines absent. Next, we have item one B, authorizing the Director of the Development and Resource Management Department to execute a contract work authorization agreement between the city of Fresno and PG&E.
Good morning, Council President, Council Members. My name is Jose Gonzalez. I manage the Sustainability Division within the Department of Development and Resource Management.
Hi. I just wanted to ask just a quick question. If you could just briefly explain this program and also, you keep alluding to reductions in service, and if you could explain a bit about that?
Yes, reduction in services as far as the community...
It's in the staff report that it keeps alluding to reductions in service.
Yes, the, the contract, previous contract that we had with PG&E was reduced from approximately two points some odd million to four hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So the reduction in services really affects what, contract consultant agreements. So we will no longer be doing the volume of work we were doing out in the community.
Like what? What work would that be?
The residential, for example, within the city of Fresno, we were doing about nine hundred to a thousand assessments. This year, we're looking at three hundred and thirty-seven.
Okay. And could you just briefly explain the assessments that you do and what, what's involved with those assessments?
So the assessments that we have planned for this year are actually to assist homeowners through the PG&E website, assisting them in, number one, creating a, an account with PG&E, and then assisting them in going through the PG&E self-assessment for their homes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Brettafield and a second by Councilmember Chavez. We'll go out to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we have, we do have a motion and a second. Any opposition? No opposition. The motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Baines and Councilmember Caprillo absent. Next, we have item one F, a resolution authorizing a submission of grant application to the Fresno Council of Governments for the twenty eighteen Measure C Transit Oriented Infrastructure for In-Fill Development Grant Program. I just wanted to ask in terms of, there were some clarifications to the item and what is included for, I guess, the application process in this round? If you could maybe...
Yes. Good morning, Council President and Council Members. I'm Scott Moser, Public Works Director. Initially, it was anticipated we'd be pursuing Measure C TOD funding for both South Stadium Project and for the Blackstone McKinley Lingo Application. However, in discussing that further with the developers for South Stadium, there really is no opportunity to pursue Measure C TOD. there really is no opportunity to pursue Measure C TOD, uh, funding for that. There's nothing eligible remaining. So as such, uh, appreciate the opportunity to clarify. The item before the council would, would only be authorizing the Blackstone and McKinley Project.
Perfect. So, today we're only talking about the Blackstone and McKinley Project to be included in this process?
Yes, that's correct.
Correct. And can we make sure that that's reflected in the, in a revised staff report? Or, or, 'cause I think it was included in, as part of the staff report, right? Just, oh, it'll be noted in the minutes? Perfect. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure for purposes of, um, my support today. And, again, this has been a project from Blackstone and McKinley that we've been working over a course of the last three years, and so I'm very excited to just continue, um, charging forward, um, on this path. So I will make a motion, um, for this item. And second by Councilmember Chavez, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second, um, and the screen is clear. Um, any opposition? Seeing none, motion passes six-zero with Councilmember Baines absent. Next, we'll go to item one-H. This is the actions pertaining to an agreement with social vocational services. And I believe this was pulled by Councilmember Steve Brando.
Good morning, Council. Aaron and Gary, Public Works.
Hey, Aaron. Uh, when I was reviewing this, um, so it's an agreement with, so it's an agreement with a vocational services c- company, uh, to allow them to do monthly maintenance services in the City of Fresno, is that right?
Correct. On the trails and with a couple other departments, parks, uh, fax and, uh, and fleet.
Can the same company do, um, so my question today is, could this maybe in the future be expanded to include other, um, city amenities such as parks and CSDs?
Um, we are looking at expanding their, uh, their services. We've looked at a few areas in the Landscape Division, um, other departments, I'm not quite sure they're here in the audience today, um, but I believe everybody's kind of looked at this and sees the value in it, so potentially, yes, it could be. And the Parks Director, Mr. Nellum is here and, and Mr. Jim Shad from Transportation, if they wanted to add anything to that.
Okay. Maybe, oh, yeah.
Good morning, sir. Parkman Nellum is Parks Director.
Parkman Nellum, Councilman Capriolio just said, "Look what I stirred up." It's really a, just a question. I, I like the program...
Absolutely.
And I'm gonna, uh, make a motion to adopt it, but I, I've also been wondering, is it the type of thing that could be expanded in the future? And Aaron just said, "Potentially." And, and you agree as the...
I, I agree with it. Um, I, I've always been a fan of working with, uh, CBOs and also nonprofits, uh, uh, just on the cleanliness of our parks and also our facilities and also landscaping, so, uh, definitely done my research, uh, on this company and I think it's a legit company and I think, uh, uh, I'd be on board to move forward with it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Well, um, like I said, I, I was always, I, I was not against this by any means, but I'm, I'm actually wondering if it, if it works, if we can expand it in the future, so...
Absolutely.
Maybe, um, within the next, maybe three or four months from now, uh, we'll have a meeting...
Absolutely.
And take a look at it and see hypothetically expanding it.
I'll be glad to, sir.
All right, cool.
Thank you very much.
With that, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Perfect. So we have a motion by Councilmember Brando and a second by Councilmember Capriolio. Um, anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none. I just wanted to just make a couple comments. I, I really appreciate this type of program that the City of Fresno is doing. Um, I know that there's been a number of other local municipalities that have also been thinking outside the box in terms of how we, um, how they create initiatives to keep our city, the cities cleaner. And so they've worked, and I'm sure you guys have seen these national stories on how local municipalities have partnered to create programs to put homeless to work. And I think that as we are looking at these types of programs that, um, I hope to, to see if the administration and the council can talk about maybe piloting a program like that. We constantly are dealing with illegal dumping and issues of cleanliness in our community. Um, we've seen these programs be successful in New Mexico. I think they just implemented it in Stockton and other, um, big local cities, so I am looking forward to, um, potentially having that discussion to see if Fresno can also pilot a program where we can put some of our homelessness, some of our homeless people, um, to work. And also see a benefit to our community in terms of, um, cleaning up our community. Thank you. Um, so there is a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to this item? Seeing none. The motion passes, um, five, five-O, um, with Councilmember Olivier and Councilmember Baines absent. We also had, um, one I pulled, this item is to approve the Second Amendment to the City Service Contract with ShotSpotter.
Morning, Council Members. Um, Jim Shad of the Department of Transportation.
Yeah, question, uh, actually it's for the Chief regarding ShotSpotter itself.
Okay.
Um, you know, one of the, I mean, obviously ShotSpotter, Chief, you, you feel has been very helpful, um, and I, can you share about, uh, how many miles now we've got using ShotSpotter? And then, I just am curious about the larger perspective of ShotSpotter. We, we're gonna talk at some point about, uh, additional funds that we have and what's the benefit of us looking at expanding ShotSpotter versus doing some other things? And, you know, in light of the gang violence and, uh, shootings that are taking place, that's, that's the thought I had about this.
Sure. Uh, we started the program with three square miles that was funded out of a grant for Fresno Unified, then, uh, matched that with the three additional square miles. Uh, they chose boundaries that were consistent with what we were hoping for, to incorporate as many schools. Uh, we've since doubled that, uh, this last, uh, year, uh, beginning in November, we added additional three square miles funded by the General Fund and then three more square miles from Fresno Unified. So today, we have twelve square miles, half funded by the city, half funded by the Fresno Unified. Uh, this additional two-point-two-six square miles will bring us to fourteen-point-two-six square miles. And we're hoping in the, uh, next, uh, budget year to maybe expand that to around seventeen, uh, to eighteen square miles and tie in some of those areas in between these ShotSpotter geographical areas, uh, that maybe we can maximize, uh, our dollars in doing that. Uh, currently, we have fifty-five of our schools covered within the ShotSpotter area and, um, this will allow us to increase it by ten, so it'll be actually sixty-five of our schools covered in ShotSpotter areas.
That's close to saying Fresno Unified?
Yes. As, as well as a hundred percent of Fresno City College will be covered in this, uh, expansion. Uh, the importance of ShotSpotter is, uh, number one, it sends an immediate alert when there's gunshot, verifies that it is gunshot, sends it directly to the patrol car and dispatch console, so that there's an immediate response. And that's important for a number of reasons. Uh, it guides our officers into that, uh, area where we know the gunshot is coming from, from within a few feet, so they're not having to drive into an area blindly. Uh, secondly, it, uh, is so accurate that we're finding shell casings at these locations that we can then test with our new, uh, NiBEN machine to compare that, shootings to shootings, um, or firearm if we recover it. And the other thing is that in seventy percent of our ShotSpotter alerts, no citizen calls in. So absent ShotSpotter, we're not even aware there's a shooting. That means we can't locate a victim, we can't apprehend a suspect leaving the area, we can't retrieve evidence. So ShotSpotter's been very, very effective in, uh, in that regard, uh, which is, uh, I, I believe it's the easiest technology and the most useful, reliable technology and accurate that I think I've been associated with in the last sixteen years as a chief. So, um, we're, we wanna continue to expand it. We're thankful for what we're able to do along that Bus Rapid Transit corridor. It's going to cover us from, uh, Olive all the way up to Dakota, um, and that entire Blackstone quarter, all the way on the forty, uh, to the forty-one side, to the east, uh, to Palm Avenue to the west. And again, it ties into some of our existing coverage, um, so we're maximizing the, uh, the dollars.
Has it, has it at this point helped with any of these, uh, shootings that you, that we've seen?
It's helped with a lot of our shootings. Uh, I can give you examples, um, you know, the fact that, uh, the Corey Mohammed incident that happened on, uh, Fulton area, uh, four, we received multiple ShotSpotter alerts. And not only were we able to get each of the alerts based on the shootings that occurred, but it allowed the officer responding to know the direction of travel of the suspect as he was firing indiscriminately in that neighborhood. And ultimately, allowed the officer to approach in a fashion that when the suspect, Corey Mohammed, ran out, uh, at that, uh, location, uh, that they, they were able to apprehend him, um, coming out of the area. Absent that, w- we may not have had an immediate response and, uh, he would've gotten away. And by the way, our average response time to a life-threatening call for service in our city is about eight minutes from the time they call to the time we respond. Uh, ShotSpotter alerts, our response time is just under four minutes.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, I, I obviously support this and would love to see the expansion of this, um, and I just, uh, encourage the councils, we look at, uh, you know, new monies that we're aware of, that maybe that, this be part of that discussion. I, I don't know, you know, I guess, uh, the administration's gotta ask you for the input, um, but I sure would like to see the input in terms of, uh, expansion of, uh, ShotSpotter, 'cause I, I think it is a tremendous fighting crime tool.
Actually, the mayor has asked that we include in our FY nineteen budget request an expansion of ShotSpotter. I don't know to what degree, but, uh, you know, what, I'd like to see us up around fifteen to twenty percent of our city. We know that in about, uh, fifty-five percent of the cases where we're collecting shell casings, um, those are ShotSpotter alerts, which means probably about fifty-five percent of our shootings we're capturing right now in that ten percent geographical area of our city.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
So there's, there's a motion by Councilmember Brettafeldt and a second by Councilmember Chavez. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, Councilmember Chavez.
Hey Chief, just a quick question. Um, as Councilmember Brettafeldt was speaking and, and I know that the way the system works and I would encourage my colleagues to go take a look when we did the tour over at the Command Center, um, just how quick and accurate it is. Did I understand it right, that you can actually tell what kind of caliber of weapon is being used when, when the system picks it up? Is that correct?
We, we may not know if it's a nine-millimeter versus a forty, but it will distinguish in the event that there's a return fire. We can tell which gun fired first. So, very helpful, we had an incident with a twenty-month-old child that was shot and killed in our city. Three people were shot on that incident and we had a ShotSpotter alert. That ShotSpotter demonstrated that there were two types of firearms fired and different calibers, and based on the shell casings at the scene, we knew that to be true. And what it does is, uh, can help us with any type of a self-defense claim by the defendant in showing, "No, in fact, they did fire first." And we've had, um, several of those incidents where we've had return fire. And, and so it does allow us to distinguish between the weapons, but maybe not know which, uh, specific caliber, but the fact that there's a difference between two different guns being fired.
Um, is the system, um, upgradable in the future, where you, you would be able to include, um, cameras that are tied to the system? Or is that something too early to kinda...
But, you know, I did a, last week, I was in, uh, Berkeley doing a presentation on ShotSpotter to their employees, talking about how valuable it is. And I met with the, the President, uh, about integrating our camera system here, uh, with our ShotSpotter. And he has assured me that they're gonna make that the number one priority for them. And, uh, so we're gonna be moving forward with that. So, again, in essence, gunshot detection based on ShotSpotter, camera ties in, automatically swivels to that particular location, uh, and then we're able to have immediate eyes on that, uh, on that scene.
And the officers would be able to pick that up somehow?
Uh, we, pick it up in the real-time crime center. We'd have to disseminate, uh, what we see in the real-time crime center to the officers who are responding.
Wow. Like Robocop.
Yeah. Getting there. Getting there.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Um, so the screen is clear, we do have a motion and a second. Any opposition to this item? Seeing opposition, the item passes unanimously with Councilmember Baines absent. Next, we will go to the scheduled ten, ten AM hearing, um, hearing to consider, uh, Plan Amendment Application Number A seventeen zero one-one and Rezone Application Number R seventeen zero sixteen and the Development Permit Application Number seventeen one twenty-eight.
Good morning, Council Members. Margot Laurel with Development and Resource Management. Uh, there have been no changes to the staff report or to staff recommendations, uh, since submittal to the council. Uh, we did notice the hearing to the surrounding neighborhood and received no additional comments from the public. We have a brief presentation prepared and are available to answer questions if desired.
You have a what? What kind of presentation?
Uh, just a brief presentation if, if you wish to see one.
Okay. Um, I really don't, but I do have a couple questions. Um, when this came to the Planning Commission, was there any debate about the, the item? Do you, do you recall?
Uh, there, I, there was not. Uh, we, we did have a, um, two, uh, letters from the public previous to the hearing, but nobody actually spoke at the hearing.
Okay. So the project didn't need to be modified at all?
No, it did not.
Okay. And, um, then are the applicants in the room today? Oh, okay. Um, can I ask a question?
I'm Tara Mortensen with Galloway Planning, Architecture and Engineering.
It was Tara?
Yes, Tara Mortensen. And unfortunately, Les Schwab couldn't be here, but we're pleased to be here today to answer any questions...
Okay.
About operations or the project.
Tara, so, um, I've had a couple of, just a couple of folks outreach, outreach to me that are in opposition to the project.
Okay.
And then, so really, one of my, one of the things when I looked at the plan, that I thought, uh, I would like to make a comment on, and, and just really, I just need a commitment from you, is the landscaping, I, I'd like to make sure that there's a robust landscaping buffer between the actual business and then the apartment residences on the one side. And so, um, I see that the plan calls for it, but just, I'm gonna ask you to work with staff and just make sure we do a robust landscape feature.
Absolutely. Are you referring to the north property line or the front edge? Okay, yeah. We, so we have a twenty-foot landscape buffer along the north property line and already in our conceptual plans have definitely...
And I saw that, and then on pla, on plans, it looks good. And then, so what I just wanna make sure is, when it gets installed, very consciously you make, it's gonna be mature trees that, that are, that get to grow there that will create a visual and sound, kind of a, a, a buffer from the business and the residences.
Yeah, absolutely. And that'll benefit the neighbors as well as Les Schwab and, and their, um, employees and customers, so, no problem.
All right, cool. Thank you, Tara.
Yeah.
So, um, really, we've mostly got one outreach, well, one person's upset that it's changing it all and the other person's upset that, uh, that this, um, automobile company's going in right next to some residences, but that person doesn't live there and is repres, is trying to represent people who have made no complaint on the project, okay? So, with that, with Tara's commitment to make sure that the, the landscaping buffers mature, then, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this item.
Great. So we have a motion made by Councilmember Brando and a second by Councilmember Olivier. Um, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this hearing? Seeing none. We'll bring it back. The screen is clear, so we do have a motion and a second. Any opposition? Seeing none, the item passes unanimously with Councilmember Baines absent. Next, we will go to General Administration, Item Three-A, Actions Pertaining to the Water Main Replacement and Service Transfer in the Sierra Sky Park Neighborhood.
Mike Harbaugh, Department of Public Utilities. This item is a request to award a construction contract in the amount of two million one-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars to Dawson Malden Construction for water main replacement, uh, within the Sierra Sky Park Neighborhood. Project includes installation of two and a half miles of water main within the road, new water services and transferring water service to, to the new system. Staff is informed the Sierra Sky Park Homeowners Association attended a neighborhood meeting to discuss concerns with the proposed project and incorporated special requirements into the contract specifications to facilitate the movement of aircraft during construction. Uh, we received five bids for the project and Dawson Malden submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bid. That was within two percent of the engineer's estimate. We now recommend, uh, approval of the environmental findings and award of the construction contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we'll go out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. The screen is clear, is there a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
So there's a motion by Councilmember Brando and a second by Councilmember Capriolio. Any opposition? Seeing none, the item passes 5-0 with Councilmember Chavez and Councilmember Baines absent. Next, we have Item 3C, which is Bill Number B6, mending section 5302 and a number of other sections related to fair evasion and enforcement. Go ahead.
Good morning. Jim Shad again. We brought this to counsel last week for discussion and this week we're simply bringing it for approval. I don't have any additional discussion from staff, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Perfect. So let's go to the public. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. We have a couple of councilmembers punched up. Councilmember Brando.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion by Councilmember Brando and a second by Councilmember Capriolio. Councilmember Olivier.
You know, I'm just really torn.
Again?
So there's a motion and a second. Is there any opposition on this item? Seeing no opposition, the item passes 6-0 with Councilmember Baines absent. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Counsel. Olivier.
Hey, what about everyone else?
Thank you for your support, Councilmember Bredafield.
Next item, we are going to, we have a legal workshop by our city attorney. Item 4A.
I think the last time we did this, Jim Sanchez was city attorney. So this is a high-level group discussion about legal issues that affect the city. I'm going to go, I have a number of topics listed. Let's see here. As you can see, I would invite you to ask questions as we go. If you want to move through some things quickly, that's fine. If you want to dwell on some things and focus on those, we can do that, too. What I would start with is the charter structure of the city. As you know, Fresno is a charter city. In California, we have two types of cities, general law cities and charter cities. Charter cities is, they, they have their own constitution, so they can do things their own way that may vary from state law, except where the state constitution says otherwise. So of course, under our charter, normally a general law city would have the council who hires the city manager and the city attorney and so forth. But under our structure, we have, they call it the strong mayor. So the, you have the seven city council members and then the mayor elected at large, and then the responsibilities are divided. The mayor's, the mayor's first responsibility is to hire and oversee the city manager. And then, of course, the city manager has the authority to oversee all the departments, almost 4,000 employees, except for the appointees of the city council. Of course, the city council appoints the city attorney and city clerk. The city council is the successor agency, the former RDA. But of course, even though the city attorney and city clerk are appointed by the city council, our clients are all of the city officials. We've listed the various departments under the city manager. The one department that under the charter is separate is retirement. I think the plan from the beginning for retirement is that they exercise independent judgment, so there's no political influence over retirement decisions, investments and that kind of thing. So the one department there listed that's not under the city manager is the retirement division. The one unique position in the city that has joint appointment authority by both the manager and the council is the controller. And again, there, the intent was the controller have a bit of independence when it comes to providing financial information and status on the city. So that's the charter structure. Getting into the authority and responsibility of the various city officials. The council, under both state law and under the charter, all authority rests with the council unless it's specifically delegated to somebody else. The council, of course, has all legislative authority. The role of others is to either recommend legislation to the council, like the mayor manager may do, or to implement that legislative decisions once the council makes a decision. So in any time we're looking at a charter issue, who has to wonder, who has what authority? You start with the council has it. And then has that been delegated to somebody else, though? Either under the charter or by a, a city ordinance, or is it just an inherent authority? All contracting authority lies with the council unless it's delegated to somebody else. The charter said, the charter says the council is in charge of all legal matters. That's done primarily through the city attorney's office, but also there's delegation to example, for example, the city manager and the city attorney to approve certain settlements under certain amounts. The council is charged with approving the organizational structure and duties of everybody that works for the city, except as it may be specifically set out in the charter. You do that every year without even really thinking about it. When you bring the budget documents in June, the budget is not only financial, it's also structured. And then you have the position authorization resolution that sets forth the number of positions and what they do, and then the salary resolution that sets forth the various salaries of everybody in the city, the ranges for those, and also some details on how the financial matters are handled for employees. So that, that's where you start. Then the mayor, the mayor has specific delegated authority under the charter. The mayor is in charge of preparing the budget and proposing that to council. And then, of course, that has to be done by about the, the first of June. It also directs that the mayor meets with all the department directors in helping to prepare the budget. The number one job really of the mayor is to hire and direct the city manager. The mayor, just like the council, is prohibited from directing any other employees directly. So technically, if the council wanted to direct something that's on the manager's side, you need to go through the manager. Or if the mayor wanted to direct somebody, technically that needs to go through the manager. The, one of the mayor's primary responsibilities is to recommend policy to the council and also to be the liaison between the administration and the council. That's the mayor's responsibility.
Can I interrupt you a second?
Yes.
You mentioned about the budget earlier. So assuming we're at the federal level and there is a crisis and we don't approve a budget by the first of July, does the city shut down like the federal government claims to have done?
Well, that's never happened, but the charter says the budget must be approved by June 30th of each year. And the charter also says that all appropriations expire at the end of the fiscal year. So yes, come July 1st, if there's not a budget approved, technically there is no authority to make any payments.
Is there any, well, I don't want to instill any ideas or anything like that, but have we thought about a backup plan just in case something like that ever happened, I wonder?
We have not thought of a backup plan. I, I suppose we would do something like the federal government would do, would be approve at least a portion of the budget to keep the essential functions going. It's never come up. I don't think we've even gotten close.
We're too responsible for that, Councilmember Capriolio.
I'm just thinking of our, our colleagues at the federal level. Maybe we could teach them a lesson or two.
Don't even think about filibustering either.
If it ever got to that point, I would recommend they approve at least a, a portion of the budget to at least keep the essential functions going. Police and fire, I assume would be the main ones. It'd be nice if everybody else got paid, too, though. Yes, so then, of course, the mayor also has line item veto authority on the budget. When it comes to the budget, the mayor proposes it, the council approves it, then the mayor can, for each line item in the budget, can either eliminate or reduce that item. And if so, then the council has the opportunity to override that veto with five votes. The mayor also is in charge of investigating all matters under the mayor's authority on the administration side. And then the mayor has general veto authority over any legislative item. So whether it's a resolution or an ordinance, there are some exceptions when it comes to land use and that kinds of thing, that kind of thing. But generally, the mayor has veto authority over any legislative items, even if that was approved 7-0 by the council. Then the council, by a 5-0 vote, then could override a veto. The manager's responsibility is to implement policy, to implement the budget via the staff and supervises all of the directors and employees under her jurisdiction. Her job is also to advise the matter, advise the mayor when it comes to policy matters. The council president has unique responsibilities. Of course, preside over all council meetings. She helps in preparing the agenda. She has the final authority on how the agenda appears. Every charter official has the authority to put something on the agenda, but then the council president has the last say on where it goes on the agenda, when it's going to be heard and that kind of thing. The council president, unless the council says otherwise, speaks for the council. The council president, at the time, if it were ever necessary, would serve as the mayor pro temp. If we lost the mayor or the mayor resigned, then the council president becomes the mayor until there's an election to fill that spot. The city attorney represents and advises all city officials on legal matters, prosecutes charter offenses and, for those known municipal code violations, approves contracts, resolutions and Fresno Municipal Code amendments, and approves certain settlements and write-offs along with the manager. The city clerk maintains the records and books of the city, prepares the agenda, handles oaths of people when they're sworn in and attests to documents for the city. Then, of course, then the other charter official is the controller. The controller's in charge of all the finances of the city, responsible for the audit, oversee payments and budget implementations, is responsible to maintain an inventory of city property, handles collections and write-offs. So those are the various authority and responsibility of the charter officials. Backup. Sources of law. In handling the legal matters of the city, there is a lot of law that we have to take into consideration, especially in California. Of course, we have to look at federal law, the constitution, federal legislation concerning civil rights, contracting, grants, drug laws and those kinds of things. And if there's a conflict, almost always, of course, federal law is going to preempt any state or local law. At the state level, we have the constitution and the statutes. When it comes to most statutes, as a charter city, to the extent our municipal code of the charter varies from state law, we get to do what we choose to do. I've seen, of course, the state legislature pointing back on that local authority and deciding for various matters, for example, pre-ailing wage, that the state wants to impose state law on the cities regardless of something being in conflict. We have to constantly look at the Political Reform Act, the Government Code and the Brown Act, and we're going to get into the details on those later. We always have to look at court decisions. As you know, legislation, a lot of times, is not complete or it may be ambiguous, so we have to look at what courts have said in interpreting that law. And of course, we have a lot of courts in the state of California. A recent example of how that's come up, the Fifth District, I'm sorry, the Fifth Circuit U.S. Court of Appeals came out with the decision concerning election law. And there was a, the city of Austin, Texas, had a law that said you could only raise funds to run for city office within a certain time window. Well, the U.S. Circuit Court of Appeals said that that's unconstitutional because there's no legitimate reason to say on federal, on February 12th, you can raise money, but not on February 11th. And that serves no legitimate purpose. So even though our charter says that you can only raise funds within a certain time window, that would not be constitutional. There's an example of something that we have to keep up on, on the changing case law, too. And that, I understand, will be good law unless and until the U.S. Supreme Court changes that, or maybe the Ninth Circuit decides otherwise.
So does that supersede our charter?
Yes, it would.
So are we gonna, would we, would you recommend us to be, to offer some changes to the charter or what does that hap, what happens when?
Well, we are first putting a memo on the city website saying the city attorney's office will not be prosecuting this as a start. I would recommend doing a municipal code change, at least to implement the federal legal decision. Ideally, we would have a charter amendment then to fix it. We actually have several things in the charter that are unconstitutional or have been preempted by state or federal law. This would be an example. Another is that under the charter, water meters are prohibited, but state and federal laws preempted us on that.
Can you repeat that?
Yes. The charter says that water meters are prohibited, at least residential, but state and federal laws preempted us on that. The charter requires that, for example, the city manager must reside in the city of Fresno, but the state constitution has said that that's not constitutional. You can only require elected officials to reside in the city and in their district. So there's three examples of things we have in the charter that are not enforceable.
Okay. Question on, on the first, on the most recent change with the Fifth Circuit. So given that we are prevented from having those rules that we've had in terms of the fundraising, so where does that leave the city of Fresno?
Yes. This only affects the time window. For example, the, the charter says you can't raise funds until the filing date for the office. Get rid of that. We still, the rules as far as how much you can donate per person, per election, those stand. Those were not affected. And in fact, in this case, in this court decision, there was an issue with the campaign donation limit there. It was $300 there. And they said that's valid because any restriction when it comes to electioning by local officials, the courts are going to look at, does this serve a legitimate purpose? And one legitimate purpose can be preventing corruption, not have undue influence by the public on elected officials when running for office. And they've said that donation limits are constitutional, but the time limit was not because it doesn't make any difference whether on February 11th or February 12th, somebody makes a donation.
So at what point can folks, if we don't have any limits, they just, if they open an account, they're running for something, then they can start raising money?
Yes. So if you are going to run in 2020, you can raise money now, but you're still limited on the $4,400 per election, per donor. So you still have to keep that in mind. You can't hit them up for $4,400 every year. That wouldn't work.
You know, to make corrections, that you're suggesting, does that have to be taken out to the public? Is it a public vote it is, or is it a council?
Any charter amendment has to go to the public. But I would recommend at least doing a municipal code change so that's codified prior to that time.
Can we direct you to prepare some of that and we can bring it?
We can.
So, yeah.
So there's an example where court decisions make a big difference in what we do locally. Grants. Many times, grant terms from both the state and the federal government contain a lot of detail on how we can or can't do things. We have to keep that in mind. This has come up recently, especially with federal grant terms that may pertain to law enforcement and immigration issues. We have to closely follow what the terms are of those grants. The charter, of course, we have to follow the charter, even though it may vary from state law. The municipal code, municipal code is our legislation, our statutes. It has the force of law. Unless it, and we try to avoid this, it would be inconsistent with the state constitution or the charter. Resolutions. When the council passes a resolution, that becomes law, too. It's just as enforceable as an ordinance or anything else. A good example, or many examples of resolutions that became law would be the number of acts that Lee Brand authored. I think he had about 20 when he was a council member. And those have the force of law, to the extent it says how we must conduct the affairs of the city. Typically, though, resolutions don't apply externally. Resolutions are internal, how's, how does the city do things? And in ordinance, we would use to apply to the public, the behavior of the public. MOUs and contracts. Of course, labor MOUs, that affects what we do. We have to be very mindful of those. And then any contractual obligations we have. And then also then, even though the charter does not specifically set it out, administrative orders. The manager has the inherent authority to manage the people under her jurisdiction, and that's largely done through administrative orders. And really, that's a very sophisticated way of doing what we all do in running our offices and deciding, you know, here are the hours of attendance and how we do things within our office. If you figure that she has 4,000 employees to manage, an administrative order is essentially how the, the manager manages all of those employees. The charter provides that the council shall establish its own rules and how it conducts council meetings and preparing the agenda and that kind of thing. The council rules. The council rules are established by resolution. Therefore, it has the force of law also. To the extent it's legislative and involves matters outside strictly the council itself, that's legislative, and that, those parts of it would be subject to veto also. It addresses in detail the obligations and authority of the council president and vice president, how to run meetings, how to prepare the agenda, how matters are voted on here, when a quorum is necessary. The council rules said you have to have a quorum, at least four, to start a meeting, and then for certain matters. Noticed hearings, you have to have a quorum present for those. And then, of course, for any vote, you have to have at least a quorum. It establishes how you handle public comment. And then motions. We've refined this. We used to follow Roberts Rules of Order. Roberts Rules was written 100 years ago. There are a number of versions of it. It was difficult to implement. So we just modified the council rules to deal with things directly. So anytime there's a motion, of course, you have the main motion, which is the action. Any council member can make a motion to amend the main motion, and then you have to deal with that amendment before you vote on the main motion. Any procedural motion, like, do we continue this item, that sort of thing. And then, we call it a friendly amendment. That's not a motion. The difference is, if you offer a friendly amendment, you go to the maker of the motion and say, I suggest that you make this change. If the maker agrees, then it's deemed amended. If not, any council member always has the authority to say, I make a motion to amend, and then that has to be voted on, if it gets a second, too.
Is that a, is that an unfriendly motion?
We wouldn't call it that. And then closed session, how we handle closed session. Of course, closed session is largely to deal with confidential matters, and I'll get into the detail later. Next, contracting. Of course, one of the main things that we do as a city is enter into a lot of contracts. Again, start it with the proposition that all contracting authority lies with the council. There's one inherent exception, and that is the mayor hiring the city manager. That contract is outside the council. Otherwise, the mayor, the council has all contracting authority unless that's delegated. There are some exceptions that the council has created by resolution or ordinance. Any public work of improvement contract over $135,000, of course, you have to have full competitive process, and it has to come to council. For any contract to be valid, you have to have the authority, follow the right competitive process, there must be an appropriation in existing funds, and then it has to be approved as to being legal by the city attorney's office. So you have to have all four of those things for any contract to be valid. When it comes to procurement, buying things and so forth, you have to look at competitive process. Of course, any contract for a public work of improvement over $135,000, that must come to council, and you must have full, either a formal bid spec process or a design build, where you sort of figure it out as you go, if the council approves it like that. For contracts under $135,000, certain contracts, you can simply go out to RFP. You send out a notice, request proposals, and then the council can, or the other officials that have delegated authority can approve those based on best value. So you can take more things into consideration when it comes to, like, service contracts and that kind of thing. It doesn't have to be low bid, as long as you can articulate the reason for giving it to that proposer. There's informal process below a certain amount, that you can simply make some calls. There are exceptions. We do have a local preference ordinance. It doesn't apply when you have state or federal funding that's up to 5%. In other words, if a local bidder is even 5% higher than a non-local bidder, you can still award the contract to the local bidder, with the understanding that the policy then is you prefer keeping the dollars local. Oh, then the no-contact ordinance.
On the local preference, these are only dollars that do not include state and federal funds?
That's correct. If state or federal funds are involved in the contract, we can't use local preference.
So this is mostly like general fund and potentially some enterprise money?
Right, like the ShotSpotter thing you did this morning.
Okay.
You could do it for that kind of contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Public works of improvement are essentially where you're out building things, and you can think of it that way. Those tend to be the most formal kinds of contracts. Purchasing goods, there's a lot of delegated authority to the purchasing manager to handle those. Services contracts, other types of contracts, employment contracts, typically those are outside the council. And then governmental contracts. We have inter-agency MOUs, for example, with the county. We have to consider also prevailing wage. State law that says anytime a public work of improvement is being subsidized with public money, then prevailing wage has to be paid. There are some exceptions, but we generally have to follow that. Brown Act. We always need to be mindful of the Brown Act. The Brown Act only applies to legislators, you all. It could apply to the mayor, to the extent he may be sitting on a board and a voting capacity, too, but mainly, it's the council members. Generally, the law is that public matters should be discussed in public. Any three council members can discuss something without it being a publicly noticed discussion, as long as those three don't discuss it with any other council members, then. So three could discuss it, three others could discuss it, and then one can't talk about it with anybody. Where we have to be very mindful of, though, is the serial meetings. The mayor can meet with all seven council members and talk about a matter. The mayor just can't say, here's what the others have said. In other words, you can't be a party to violating the Brown Act by sharing information that shouldn't be shared. And that applies to all of us who aren't council members. We have to be mindful of that. When it comes, the Brown Act requires an agenda with certain notice to the public. So the agenda, all it requires is that there's fair notice to the public as to what's going to be discussed. For the regular agenda items, the Brown Act requires 72 hours' notice. So technically, for our nine o'clock Thursday morning meeting, the agenda would have to go out by nine o'clock on Monday. We usually get it out on the Friday before. That's what the council rules say. Special meeting. A special meeting can be called at any time by the council president, or at least four council members, on 24 hours' notice of when that item would be heard. So if you want to have the item heard at three o'clock on a Thursday, that notice just has to go out by three o'clock on Wednesday. Then closed sessions. Closed sessions are the one place where all seven council members can get together and discuss something. And that's the only place that that can happen, if it's city business. The types of closed-session matters that we can discuss confidentially are litigation, whether it's threatened litigation or actual litigation. We can discuss that privately. There must be a lawyer there for that to work. And for all closed sessions, it's on a need-to-know basis. If you're not needing to be in that discussion, we can waive confidentiality if somebody's in there that shouldn't be. Litigation. Real estate, negotiating the terms of real estate, whether it's a lease, buying or selling, we can discuss that in closed session. Labor negotiations, those can be discussed in closed session. Personnel decisions, where the council has authority over that person. So basically, that's the city attorney and the city clerk. And then security matters. Because you don't want to have public discussions about how we're protecting ourselves, because then you may give up confidential information that shouldn't be out there for the public, you can discuss security matters in closed session, too.
Hey Doug, I want to ask a question about that, on the Brown Act. Like, but it's, but it's fair game for a council member to make his or her views known publicly? And then, then your colleagues know where you stand on an issue, but as long as you've made it publicly, now they know where you stand, and they may or may not talk to you about the issue.
Right. As legislators, you have a First Amendment right to go make a speech on any topic you want to, as long as it's not privileged information, yes, on that topic. If you wanted to go out and give a speech on the upcoming budget, you can do that. You just can't get together directly with other council members and do that.
Okay. And then, in social settings, more than three council members can be at a social setting as long as city subject matter is not discussed. Is that correct?
Right. The Brown Act does not prohibit all seven council members from going to a public event and being there, as long as they are not discussing city business.
Got it.
Or any item that could be city business.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You can go discuss football, or the weather, those kinds of things.
Got it.
And now, we have to be mindful of the fact that it may give the appearance of doing something wrong, if all seven or more than three were together, but just make it very clear that you're not discussing city business. Then next, the FPPC, the Political Reform Act. We do a lot of training on this, so I won't get into a lot of detail. But of course, the FPPC limits gifts to the legislators or all, certain officials of up to $470 per year now. So if a developer wants to take you to lunch, that's fine. You have a limit from that developer of up to $470 per year, and then anything over $50 must be disclosed publicly. There are some exceptions and so forth, and we like to deal with those on a case-by-case basis. If you ever have a question, come talk to us. Conflicts of interest. We always have to be mindful of conflicts of interest. And basically, the test is if you have a close relationship, familiar or so forth, or your business connected with an item that could be coming to council, you must recuse yourself. You can't participate at all. That's the essence of a conflict, and that applies to the non-electors, too. For example, the city manager can't be involved externally in a contract that would involve the city. Then, of course, we deal with elections. There's state and federal law that deals with elections, a lot of state law. The filing date, of course, was this week, February 12th, for the June election. The charter requires that any candidate for city office must reside in that district at least three days prior to them actually filing for that office, whether it's a council member or the mayor. And then fundraising, we discussed that. The other part of the fundraising is that you must track, of course, report, and then there are limits, how much can be donated for a person or entity for each election. And so the primary and general elections of the year are considered two separate elections. Then, of course, we deal with discrimination and harassment laws. Everybody in the city undergoes training for this. There is special training for the elected officials pursuant to a council resolution and also state law. The types of discrimination and harassment can be intentional, having the effect of discrimination, and we've all discussed the objective and subjective test. We undergo the training. As far as city policy is concerned, we are actually tighter than state and federal law. We make the policy applicable to everyone, including the electeds. We have one thing that is special about the way we do things, we have mandatory reporting, whether you believe that you're a victim or you observe anything. It's mandatory that you report any violation of our discrimination and harassment laws to either the city attorney, the city manager, or the personnel director, based upon who you feel most comfortable reporting that to. And then, of course, if there is a claim, there must be an investigation and then corrective action taken if necessary. What all this boils down to, essentially, you're safe if you don't do anything you wouldn't want to read about in the newspaper. Let's see here, next. That's it. So I'm here for any questions on that, if you have anything. Thank you all.
All right. I'd just like to say that was well-presented, short, concise, to the point, and hit the issues that concerns us most, really, on a daily basis. So very well done, appreciate it. And sometimes, I think it's something we should do annually, just to refocus on
You can do that.
On the roles that each of us play at city government, and what our responsibilities are, and the things we need to be conscious of day in and day out. But I was, kept my attention. Steve was diverting my attention a little bit.
Was it me?
I think it was.
Okay. I thought it was the other way around. Go ahead.
Councilmember Chavez, who gets the blah-blah award today, by the way. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So when I was working on asset last year, you know, I wanted to kind of, you know, I had kind of been tired of the way things had been going, and I felt like we needed to really change direction to attack, attack this slumlord problem that we were seeing in Fresno. And so I kind of got involved and, and started thinking about the best way that that department could be, you know, the resources could be brought to bear on the problem. So, and we did, we did a lot of good work. It was passed at council, it's bearing fruit, but in that discussion, I was kind of told that, very limited, council has limitations on what we can prescribe to a department. So, and so I took a couple step back, steps back, and I, and I made some compromises with the former administration, and, you know, in the way that we rolled out asset. So maybe could you clarify that for me? What will, so if council wants to, can, does council have the ability to get down into the details of how a department is run and how a program is executed?
Right. This is one of the more difficult things to deal with under our charter structure. The council has the authority to establish organizational structure. In other words, how many departments, units within those departments and so forth. You can do that by resolution. You get, you can establish how many positions each department gets, what the titles and duties of each position are. In other words, that you're going to have this many investigators, or this many inspectors, and here's what the duties of those people will be. You can do all, what the salaries of these people will be. You can do all of that. What you can't do is day-to-day direct what they will do. You can't say, okay, today I want your investigator to go out and do this. You can't do that. That's up to the manager. You also can't get into discipline and hiring and firing of those people. You can't say, I want this person to go, or I want you to hire this person, or this person to be disciplined. All of that is under the authority of the manager. So the day-to-day types of things are purely under the manager. The structure, duties, and obligations, and all of those things, the council can, by resolution, establish those things, subject to veto.
Yeah, so in reality, I think I was misled, because I was essentially told that council can't direct, council can kind of direct the policy, but can't direct the way that the programming is run. And I wasn't talking about day-to-day, but I wanted to make sure that certain, I wanted to make sure that certain functions were being accomplished by individuals within the department. And it ended up working out. I'm just, I just want to further my education on, you know, if it happens in the future. It worked out, and I'm not complaining, and there's nothing I feel like needs to be fixed. So everything turned out fine. But in all reality, council does have the ability to really direct the details of something that they want accomplished.
Through the structure and then the duties of each position that the council authorizes, yes. You can say, this person, here are the duties of this person, at that title or that level. Then you just can't say, okay, I want you to go do this. You can't do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Then another thought that I have is, when it comes to MOUs with our bargaining partners, our labor, the labor units in the city of Fresno. Right now, you know, the administration takes the lead on all bargaining negotiations. And then things come to council when 99.9% of the decisions are made, and there's a recommendation to move forward on, to change a policy or to give a raise to a certain bargaining unit. And then council is asked at the last minute just to approve or hypothetically deny the recommendation, but mostly it's, you know, it's to approve the recommendation. And then, if council wants to make, give input at that time, really, the cake has already been baked, the negotiations have been done. So suggest to me a way that council would get more involved in understanding and participating in the negotiations with our labor agreement.
Well, first of all, the council in an ordinance has directed that, I believe it's the personnel director is the labor negotiator for the city, or if not, the city manager. So by council ordinance, that's already been directed. So that's how the process, that's the default process. At any time, the council could call a closed session to discuss a pending labor MOU and give direction to the labor negotiator to go pursue a certain path.
Okay.
So unless you change the ordinance, yes, they fully have the authority to go negotiate the MOUs, barring direction from the council otherwise.
And, and even if that direction clashes with the path that the administration is taking, then the labor negotiator would work on behalf of council?
Well, the, the council ultimately will have to approve the MOU.
Right.
As well as the bargaining unit. And so, to the extent the council can give that direction, the council can't say, you shall go into the meeting and say this. But if they have that direction, knowing that the council's not going to approve it otherwise, then I think that's meaningful. But typically, the council doesn't call a closed session to discuss an open contract early on. It typically is at the end. But the council always has that. It typically is at the end, but the council always has that authority.
Okay, all right. And there was one other item.
Can, can I just add to this point? So, just a couple minutes ago, you said, we cannot direct staff, but in this instance, this is different?
No, the, the council can give direction on a contract that's coming to council. The council has delegated authority to the labor negotiator to go negotiate contracts. But yes, the council can say, here's what we want in that contract. You can do that, because that is establishing policy. Now you can't say, I want you to go meet with so-and-so tomorrow. You can't get into that level of detail.
Okay, thank you.
Then, so, and my colleagues know this, because going back to the Brown Act, I've made this pretty public. I've said it in just council comments, that I really believed that we need to separate out code enforcement from DARM and create its, essentially its own department with its own leadership, management team and so forth. And, and I really believe, we've been struggling over the years that I've been a council member, accomplishing some of our goals, because there's just a lot of personnel underneath DARM, and they run a lot of different types of operations in the city of Fresno. So my colleagues know this, that I've been a proponent of separating out code, creating its own department, and then, you know, bringing in housing and the different functions of code, weed abatement, all the things that you think of code. So when I think of weed abatement, I don't think of planning and development. I think of code enforcement. And yet, it's currently all under planning and development. So, so I've been a proponent of separating out code enforcement from DARM. And, and, and I might want to meet with you then on the best, so the council has the ability to do that?
The council, yes, through a resolution, could say there are going to be two different departments. That's subject to veto, and it might take five votes to override that, but yes, you essentially do that every June. You establish the organizational structure, so you can change that organizational structure too.
Okay, thank you. And then that's the end of my questions, and I'll be listening to my colleagues.
So, we don't have anyone else punched up but our city manager?
Thank you, council president. I, back to the charter discussion early on, I just wanted to make sure the council was aware that the mayor is interested in working with the council subcommittee to look at possible changes to the charter, so if any of you are interested.
Perfect, thank you. Councilmember Brettafeld.
Yeah, your first, can you pull up your first page that you had on your...
Was it the...
Yeah.
That?
No, sorry, a second. Yeah, so the council, all authority unless delegated, I mean, can you go just briefly into that a little bit more, where you say, all authority unless delegated?
Well, the charter actually says that, is that the charter is the legislative body in, I mean, I'm sorry, the council is the legislative body in charge of the city, except, and they have all the authority to run the city except as authority is specifically delegated. And that is done several times in the charter, through the mayor, manager, controller, and so forth.
Okay, and so you say, all authority to run the city, I mean, obviously, the mayor has oversight over the staff. All authority to run the city?
To establish policy.
Establish policy, determine departments. Steve mentioned about DARM coming out, it takes four votes to make that change. If he vetoes it, it would take five votes.
That's right.
Okay. And we can close a department, start a new department, all it takes is the four votes in the budget, or something that he can veto.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. The screen is clear. Thank you, city attorney. I don't believe we have to go out to the public because it's, it was a workshop, correct?
That's right.
Thank you. We pretty much have gone through the entire agenda. The only left, you're punched up?
Yeah.
Okay. So, one, I think we have, councilmember Brettafeld punched up.
I just wanted to ask for a reconsideration of the vote on 3C. It was oversight on my part, I accept responsibility for it, but that was an item I voted against last week and wanted to reconsider the vote because I really want to register a no vote, not a yes vote.
So are you making a motion?
Making a motion to reconsider.
So you have a motion and a second by councilmember Chavez. I believe we have to vote on this, so is there any opposition to this motion?
Was there a second to the motion?
Yes. Is there any opposition? Councilmember Olivia? No, you were saying, okay. So, so the motion is for reconsideration of item 3C. So then we will bring back item 3C and revote on item 3C, is that how?
That's correct.
It works? Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. Any opposition?
I'm opposed to 3C.
No, 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 we're talking about...
Oh, for the stolen reconsideration?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm supporting that.
Okay, seeing there's no opposition, that motion passes unanimously with councilmember Baines absent. So now bringing back item 3C, is there a motion on the item? Okay, councilmember Brando made the motion and second by councilmember Capriolio. Any opposition?
I'm a no vote.
Perfect. The motion passes 5-1.
Thank you, council.
With councilmember Baines absent, thank you. So the last thing that we have left is unscheduled communication. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to comment during this time, please come Seeing none, now we are pretty much done with the agenda. The only thing we have is closed session. City attorney?
Yes, for closed session, we have labor negotiations concerning the six listed bargaining units. There will not be any announcement afterwards.
Perfect, so we will be adjourning, and I just will mention it today, right now, because we won't be coming back. Councilmember Capriolio, you wanted to adjourn in the memory of all the students that...
Unfortunately, you passed away yesterday, and those that are injured, and our prayers go out to the families and to those that are injured, that they heal quickly.
Perfect, so we will be adjourning in their memory. Thank you.